Three thirty.
Okay, Ms. Lydia, go ahead and take us live.
All right. We are live.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our Tuesday, July the twenty eighth Agenda session. Can I have approval of minutes, please, to move?
Prove.
All right, we have a motion and a second with no dissent. We'll go ahead and let the minute stand as recorded. We have one reading, one ordinance on final reading that we went over last week in Public Works. Does anybody have any questions concerning that item? Concerning golf courses. Councilman Mitchell, are you good?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
He's gonna be good forever, aren't you?
I'm gonna send an email I got from a golf course management company to you all, probably this afternoon or tomorrow.
Okay. All right.
But I'm good with this vote, yes.
Okay, we'll move to resolutions now. We have no ordinances on first reading tonight. Resolutions seven A, Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a fifth amendment to lease agreement with East Nuga LLC and substantially the form attached for a senior activity meeting space in the portion of East Gate Town Center at fifty-six hundred Brainerd Road for an additional term of one year for the amount of seven thousand forty-eight forty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents per month for a total amount of eighty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-eight cents.
Okay, any questions, comments? See no hands. B, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a first agreement to exercise option to renew with Helen Ross McNabb Center and substantially the form attached for a hundred and twenty square feet of office space in a portion of the Family Justice Center located at fifty-seven oh five Uptown Road, identified as tax map number one-five-seven M A zero-one-two for an additional term of two years in the amount of two thousand six hundred and forty dollars.
Questions or concerns? C, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a first agreement to exercise option to renew with Legal Aid of East Tennessee Incorporated in substantially the form attached for four hundred and fifty-four square feet of office space in a portion of the Family Justice Center located at fifty-seven oh five Uptown Road, identified as tax map number one-five-seven M A zero-one-two for an additional term of two years in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Okay, I'm gonna keep going till I see a hand. D, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a first agreement to exercise option to renew with Partnership for Families Children and Adults Incorporated in substantially the form attached for a hundred and seven square feet of office space in a portion of the Family Justice Center located at fifty-seven oh five Uptown Road, identified as tax map number one-five-seven M A zero-one-two for an additional term of two years in the amount of two thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars.
All right. E, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a first agreement to exercise option to renew with Prevent Child Abuse Tennessee and substantially the form attached for three hundred and eleven square feet of office space in a portion of the Family Justice Center located at fifty-seven oh five Uptown Road, identified as tax map number one-five-seven M A zero-one-two for an additional term of two years in the amount of six thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars.
All right. F.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a first agreement to exercise option to renew with Southern Adventist University and substantially the form attached for seven hundred and eighty-five square feet of office space in a portion of the Family Justice Center located at fifty-seven oh five Uptown Road, identified as tax map number one-five-seven M A zero-one-two for an additional term of two years in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars.
Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question has been asked before, but I just can't remember the answer. What does Southern Adventist University do at the Family Justice Center?
They have their, they do counseling. They have their graduate program there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh-huh.
All right. G, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Irwin Marine Riverfront LLC and substantially the form attached for the lease and management of the Ross's Landing Marina properties as defined in the lease agreement for a term of ten years with the option to renew for two additional terms of five years each with rent at a sum equal to a percentage of the annual gross revenue of tenant made with, made from or upon the premises at a rent factor of three and a half percent of gross revenue derived from the premises.
Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure. I haven't looked at attendees yet, but what what type of option is this? Is this an option that they can exercise or is both parties can exercise?
Let's see, let me. You want me to bring more in?
You can give him a shot.
Let me make sure.
Look like Richard has his hands up.
Yeah.
Richard Bealyn, go ahead. Ms. Lydia, bring Richard Bealyn in, please.
Okay. He is on his way.
And there he is now.
Hey, Counsel.
Mr. Bealyn.
Hey, Councilman Mitchell, I am, can you repeat your question, please?
Yeah, I was just noticing the two additional terms of five-year with the options to renew.
Right.
And I was wondering if that option was a one-way option that they could renew or we both, both parties have the right to renew or not to renew after the original ten years.
It's both parties. So if either one wants to cancel and not do it, then either one could, could not do that. It's not, it's not a must-renew.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, and James is available too, if anyone has any other questions about that agreement.
I have one.
Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm just noticing, if I'm reading this correctly, and thanks for Councilman Mitchell for bringing this is a ten-year lease with, this is a potential of a twenty-year lease, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, and the rent is, this is a little complicated. So the rent is based on three and a half percent of gross revenue derived?
Correct.
So that means the rent can fluctuate dramatically?
Depends upon what, yes, sir, what their, what their profits would be.
So are we, are we, is the city getting revenue through rent? Through the sale of boats?
Yes, we would get a percentage of the revenue and, and from the leasing of the docks. I'd like to bring in James Bergdahl, if I could, real quick, and he could have some more clarity on this answer.
Ms. Lydia, go ahead and bring in Mr. Bergdahl.
I will do that.
While you're bringing him in, I guess what I'm trying to put in my mind is, is the city in the boat business now?
The city, city gets a percentage off of the sale of boats on the property.
Okay, so we're making money off of selling boats now against private boat sellers and competing against other private boat sellers in the, in the, in the city?
That portion is allowed for any merchandise they sell, including any brokered boats or new or used boats in the city. Yes, sir.
Is there any language, Phil?
The definition provisions over paragraph six of the agreement on here define what is gross revenue, and it's got, yes, A through G items here. It also includes the sales of gasoline that they might have in connection with this and any, I guess, taxes that would be involved on the property on here or any refunds. It's pretty, pretty broad on what is gross revenue.
So now we're, now we're in the fuel business too, okay? What keeps them from writing up all boat sales, not at that location, but keeping them down there to market to a broad audience?
But we just have, yes. We do have.
Rubbing off on me, Councilman.
Yes. We do have auditing provisions in the agreement that would allow that to occur on here, and you're gonna be subject to their, I guess, their books and then reviewed by your auditors.
Okay.
Councilman, we have.
Yeah.
We have Mr. Bergdahl on with us now. Would you like for him to give a shout at this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, Bergdahl.
Good afternoon. I can't really speak on the, the actual revenue. I'm more interested in the operation of the marina as an asset of the city. The, the existing agreement, which has been in place for a number of years, where Irwin Marine took over from Marine Max, had language in there regarding the, in a similar fashion, that revenue, the city shared revenue from, from boat sales or fuel sales, any activities at the marina itself. This agreement has been updated because there's an interest for a marine or Irwin Marine to continue operation. It's just that there's been some changes on their, the, the rent payment based off of the actual activity that takes place in the marina itself, where it's more dockage and fuel sale, sales as their main revenue, plus boat rentals, which is a new venture of theirs.
Yeah, well, anybody who knows me knows I'm very familiar with this arena. So I'm just curious as to, I just feel like, I don't know, this is a little strange. Do we receive other bids, other ideas?
Yes.
And they obviously didn't make the cut, and can you tell me why they might not have made the cut? Or were their ideas not beneficial to the city or?
The, the city is looking at it from an operational standpoint, who would be the best company that can continue the operation of the marina? We have an existing relationship with Irwin Marine. They operate several other marinas in the area. From the operational standpoint, Irwin was in a scored RFP process. It came out as the, the leader.
And they'll be in charge of who gets to rent spaces and who doesn't get to rent spaces at events too? They'll have complete control over that?
The same control they've had in the existing contract.
Okay. Wow, okay, that opens up the whole box of stuff for me, but Chairman, that's all I've got for now. I'm a little reluctant on that one.
Okay. Any other questions from Council before we dismiss Mr. Bealyn and Mr. Bergdahl? All right. Ms. Lydia, if you would allow them to exit?
Yes, sir.
And we'll go on to seven A, please.
A resolution to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Tom Snow to the Chattanooga Metropolitan Airport Authority Board.
Questions or concerns? J, please.
A resolution adopting the historic River to Ridge area plan, Area Three, with modifications to the following sections described herein.
Councilman Bird.
I would, at six o'clock, I'd be moving to approve on the staff version. And can we have, because they both read the same, could we have her read the staff version?
I'm not sure they both read the same, Councilman. I think staff version is a little bit different.
Yeah.
I got you. Okay, on paper. Okay. Why don't we bring in Mr. Bridger to clarify some language. Ms. Lydia?
Yes, sir. Um, I'm not seeing him.
Is he not with us? Okay. Thought he was gonna join us today.
I thought he was too, sir.
Karen Hunt here?
Karen Hunt is.
Listen, I don't wanna bring Karen in if she's not prepared.
Yeah.
I really thought Mr. Bridger was gonna join us and, and clarify a little bit of language, but maybe we can do that. Now, I hate to do this at six, but.
Can we come back to this item, sir?
Yeah, let's, let's do, let's do that.
We'll see if we can get Bridger in.
Sure. All right, let's, let's move on, since we do have two versions here.
Oh, he's in, sir.
He's here now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, what is he under? I don't see him. Mr. Bridger, would you raise your hand, sir? We can't find you.
Oh.
Karen Hunt?
Maybe he's under.
Should I bring Karen in?
Yeah, yeah, she's got her hand up now.
Okay.
I love these Zoom meetings.
Hello? That is weird. I'm Karen Hunt.
You are today, anyway.
Oh, that is so weird. Okay.
Ah.
Vanity crisis.
All right, John, just leave it right there, okay?
Okay. I got you.
Would you, I guess, describe a little bit about the differences in the planning commission version and the staff version and, and some language you wanted to clarify as well about places?
Yeah, sure. So the first version is basically the one you see, the first item on your agenda is the planning commission recommended version. And as we noted in the prior presentations, the staff recommendation and the PC recommendation are the same except for two changes. The one relates to the use of the natural resources overlay on the, on the place types map. The second relates to how place types are used in rezoning requests. So that's the only two differences. I think you heard it at the public hearing a couple of weeks ago, the community's recommendation regarding that. So if I understand, if, based on Councilman Bird's comments about the staffers, and that would be the second item on your agenda. And the only change that I would recommend as a clarification note to the staff version is there's a sentence that we would add that says, "Staff recommended conditions will be limited to addressing public safety and nuisances created by rezoning requests" as defined by state law, and Phil can back me up on that. I think the main thing is, is a staff, again, not saying council, but city, a staff, and we're reviewing his own request, if we're recommending conditions, it really should be addressing a public safety or nuisance issue. So that's all it is, just a clarifying note to add as part of that staff version.
Okay, so is that, Mr. Bridger, that would be something that we would need to amend?
Yes, sir.
On the floor?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Bird, do you understand what Mr. Bridger is asking for here?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from, let me switch back over. Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Bridger, that will be an amended version to the two versions that we have or the staff version. So that would, you want to explain to us what that process entails?
I think what would happen is, is, again, you would, whoever the council person making a motion to accept or to, the version would say with the added amendment, with that noting it. And I've provided, I've provided that narrative to our council reps with, with the page number reference. I think that will suffice for the record. So once that's done, just note that there will be one more step after you all vote tonight. If you do vote for the staff recommended version, since it is different than what PC approved, it would go back to Planning Commission. It'll be probably in September for a confirmation note by state law. If, if council adopts something that's different that was recommended by PC for a plan, it goes back to PC for one more confirmation vote. So just note that'll be the next step.
And then back to us?
If, well, if, if Planning Commission confirms it, it stops there.
Right. And if they don't, back to us.
That's right, for the final vote.
Okay.
Phil, anything else to add to that?
No, and, and the reason for John's conditional language on here is it's gotta be conditioned to ameliorate the harm to adjoining property owners or to the citizens of the city whenever it's done. And that's one of the state law requirements under the provision that allows you all to have conditional zoning.
Councilman Gilbert.
Thank you, Chair. John?
Yes, sir.
I wanna make sure on the portion that I have, a small portion, it's gonna remain our one and the current businesses there will still be there, but now no addition will be added.
That is correct. That is correct. And that part of the area, right there at the base of Missionary Ridge to the north, we just acknowledge existing commercially zone properties at a couple of intersections in that area. The rest of it's suburban residential.
Okay, I'm saying the thing this evening is just, it's already there, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is fascinating. We approve this. If we approve the staff version, you say it goes back to Planning Commission?
Yes, sir, by state law.
They go back to their version, and then it comes back to us, and we go back to the staff version. How many times we go in that circle?
At least about twenty times, no. I think it's just a way, because it, because really it's, it's the Planning Commission's role to kind of develop policy. So, you know, recommend, and so, and that's fine, it's part legislative role to say, hey, we would recommend approving this particular version. It just gives the Planning Commission one more opportunity to confirm what the desire and will of city council is. So it just kind of goes back to them for confirmation, and if they, if they confirm it, then it stops there.
But if they don't?
It goes back to you for a last vote, so it won't keep going back and forth.
Okay, so one time.
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Birds.
So, John, if I'm hearing you right, tonight is the staff version as amended for clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Hunt before we let her go?
Ms. Hunt.
Wow.
Hi, Karen.
That's the name on the screen.
Thought I'd give you a good laugh this afternoon.
Yeah, we made one.
All right.
Okay, I see no other hands. Thank you, John. All right. Okay, moving down into Public Works and Transportation, I believe we read this last week, didn't we, Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Read it into the, into the minute, so if we have no questions or concerns, I'm gonna go ahead and skip over this item. We'll now move to seven L under Youth and Family Development.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Youth and Family Development to allow funds previously donated to the Office of Family Empowerment by Chattanooga Gas to be transferred to green spaces to administer the grant program to families impacted by COVID-19 and tornado recovery on behalf of the City of Chattanooga's Youth and Family Development Department and Chattanooga Gas in the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Any questions on this item, comments? Okay, M, please.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Youth and Family Development to provide services to two hundred children through collaboration between Head Start, Early Head Start Grant, and Chambliss Center of Children, Pro Raybona Day Nursery, Maurice Kirby Daycare Center, Children's Academy for Education and Learning, Volunteer Community School, Child Care Network, Redlands Road and Hamill Road, and Signal Center for a total amount of nine hundred eighty-one thousand three hundred and forty-nine.
Any questions or concerns? Okay, that wraps up the agenda portion of today's work. We're gonna move into departmental reports and some other items. I would like to remind the Council that we do have, or we do need, an attorney-client privilege meeting today. I would like to start it by four forty-five to give us ample time to discuss the matters that we need to discuss. We do have a legislative committee that we're going into here in just a few minutes on the eighth. Can't wait as well. We move into departmental reports, ECD on workforce development. Mr. Councilman Oglesby, I think you've been in touch with ECD on this. Is Ms. Williams gonna present this? No, it looks like Sharita.
Sharita or, and, or, yeah, I think it's Sharita.
Sharita has her hand up.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, perfect.
Good afternoon, Ms. Allen.
Good afternoon, Council.
Think you have a report for us on workforce development?
And so this is an item where Norfolk Southern Foundation is providing a one-time donation of twenty-four thousand dollars to the Workforce Development Division. It's in recognition of the need to provide funding to support efforts to find and identify career paths for both underemployed and hard-to-employ individuals. And so this is an item that is simply the city accepting this donation.
Do we have a plan for this twenty-four thousand dollars at this point?
At this point, we do not have a plan for the entire twenty-four thousand. We are currently looking at a partnership with UTC to bring back the Manufacturers Excellence Program, the MEP program. We had held that in the past. It went on hiatus. We also have COVID upon us, and so we are now exploring how we bring back these workforce programs, recognizing in a COVID environment, we're trying to figure out how to do that either electronically or social distance-wise, and we're looking at partners for that. So right now, no, there is not a hard and fast concrete program that's set up for implementation of this twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the Council concerning this, this item? Wow, no questions. Wait a minute. Finally, we got a hand. Councilwoman Coonrod.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Sharita, I think it's great that outside organizations, companies are investing in our workforce development, but I have a couple of questions. So how will we screen people that have been identified as underemployed or, you know, background issues, hard to employ, to take part in the programming?
We have a number of workforce partners that refer businesses to us. And then we have a system where we identify which of those candidates are both interested in working in manufacturing and then eligible to participate in these particular courses if we choose to, to fund the cohorts.
Now, with the, will there be anything done differently from the previous program?
Yes, based, based on feedback from this body, yes. We're looking at that changing the way that we implemented this program last time.
Okay. Now, when they graduate, will they be guaranteed a job or is it just getting them work-ready?
We are not in a position to guarantee jobs. This is a career readiness program, and I appreciate you saying work-ready because it is a career readiness program. However, it is also a program that has identified employers on the back end to increase the likelihood of folks finding jobs. So it's not just a class that people sit through and then we send them on their way. It's a class that people sit through, there are workforce partners that are involved, there are actually employers that are involved, and at the end of it, there are, there are interview opportunities for folks to then find employment. So it's identifying that, that career pathway so that we're, we're, we're channeling folks into employers that have advertised open positions, and these are employers that are working with us to fill those positions.
Okay, so when we start working with the folks we have identified at the interview process to get them started to be a part of the program, can we let the participants know upfront? Once you go through this week class or three weeks, however long it is, it does not guarantee you placement of jobs because I've seen several times where we partner even with Aerotech or, you know, different people, and they're expecting to have a job, right, at the end of it, and I got so many emails and phone calls about it, and they're just left with a certificate, and they're like, we still can't get a job. And hopefully, there's something put in place where we can help them interview with, you know, the different styles of interviews, because that was a problem too. People were showing up smelling like marijuana, and, you know, they weren't dressed appropriately for the interviews and different little factors that I, I'm, I probably shared with you all from the previous times, and I just don't want that to happen this time. I want people to fully be aware of what they're gonna be going through if they get accepted into the program.
We are managing those expectations on, on both the, the candidate, the job seeker side, and then the employer side as well. And historically with our programs, the interviews through these cohorts typically happen at the, the last day of the session. So you're coming sort of, you know, inappropriate attire for the So you're coming sort of, you know, inappropriate attire for the last day of class, the graduation, because all of the employers typically are at that last day graduation.
Now, will Mr., uh, Harwood, will he be identifying the people, like, before we would send him emails of people we identified in the community to take part, or would it be a different process?
Um, it, it will, it will look like the same process, but we are tweaking that based on the feedback from last time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Allen before we let her go?
Thank you for sharing it with us.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, Ms. Lydia? Okay, if you would, um, counsel, look at your items for purchasing this afternoon. Uh, looks like we just have two items. Do we have any questions or concerns over the two purchase items for this afternoon? Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any concerns. Um, I just want Phil to quote again, um, the section in our charter that says that we, you know, responsible for giving, like, police officers and firefighters uniforms. Um, he had once before had, you know, shared it, but I would like for it to be shared again, because at 6 o'clock, I'm sure we'll get calls from, um, you know, protesters saying, hey, that money shouldn't have been spent in that way, and they, you know, just to help them understand that this is in our charter. So when it's in our charter, that mean that it has to be done. Like, we don't get to pick and choose and say we can't do it because it's in our charter.
Yes, ma'am. There, there is a requirement in, of a uniform and equipment allowance that is under section 1314 of the city's charter, and that provision just says the city will provide in each fiscal budget, a uniform and equipment allowance for every fireman and policeman, and it'll be paid annually every year since 1963. So that's in your charter unless that provision is appealed.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions or concerns about our purchasing for tonight? If not, uh, let's put up, let's pull up our August, uh, fourth agenda, our two-week agenda. Uh, are there any questions or concerns on our two-week agenda, August the 4th? I'm seeing no hands. All right, if you would, take a look at your future considerations. And, uh, of course, public works and transportation, we'll go over those items next week during our public, uh, Public Works and Transportation Committee, which, um, basically only leaves, uh, information, RIT. Councilman Gilbert?
I just want to make sure, did they make that change on, on five, on information technology? When it said July 18, 2020 through July 17, 2020? No, they meant to say 21, I'm assuming.
Phil, can you help us out there?
Yes, sir, at least the resolution version I've got here for, uh, KCI says July 18, 2020 through July 17, 2021 now.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You good, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, uh, I'll tell you what, at this time, I see no other, uh, agenda items that we need to cover. So at this time, I'm gonna turn the chair over to our vice chair, Ken Smith, who is our legislative committee chair. Uh, so, Mr. Vice Chair, the floor is here, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, so a call to order, our legislative committee have approval in the minutes?
Will you approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I see nobody raising hands or in the issue, so those minutes will stand as recorded. Uh, resolutions, Madam Clark, let's go ahead and read this one item that we do have on here from the office of City Attorney, please.
Resolution authorizing the Office of the City Attorney to engage the various law firms listed below for legal services and general litigation matters, corporate transactional intellectual property and administrative matters, labor and employment matters, planning and zoning matters, and government relations matters for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. I do see one hand. Mr. Mitchell, is that a new hand?
Yes, it is.
All right, please go, sir.
Thank you, Mr. For the Attorney. Phil, don't we usually list those firms, uh, in these resolutions?
I, I do, yes, sir. Uh, for the general litigation matters, the corporate, uh, matters, labor employment, I list the specific firms that are involved. Uh, I've tried to deal with the same firms that we dealt with over the last, um, year anyway in this group, with the one exception of including someone by the name of Keith Reisman on the list here at this point. And Mr. Reisman, in his, uh, work down in Puerto Rico, is still assisting us somewhat on a long-distance lawsuit involving the, the Little family that has been ongoing for a long time. So actually got some work out of him from the boat this week.
Why would you do that to him?
It, it, it was amazing. He actually responded better than he did in the office. It was, it was interesting.
That's not a surprise.
I guess my, 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 my main question was, is, is, is there a way before 6 o'clock to list those firms, or do you feel it's not necessary?
They're, they're all in the resolution itself, actually.
Okay, so it's with our?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Go ahead, Councilman Mitchell?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
You betcha, no problem. Seeing no further hands, uh, we will move to our eight can't wait resolution. This is in your folder. I know it's been floating around there for a few weeks. Um, I do believe, Councilwoman, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilwoman Coonrod, you had brought this to the city attorney to have, um, this item discussed amongst the council. Uh, would you like to introduce it further, and then we'll see if the council has any further questions about it?
Sure. Um, I mean, it is really self-explanatory, um, and I do believe that, um, Chief Roddy, you know, he implemented a lot of the stuff before even asking, made different changes ahead of it, you know? So I'm really proud of his efforts in doing that, um, but the things like the chokehold and, um, duty to intervene and, um, you know, the other six as well that's there that you can see. But I wanted to make sure we had, had a safeguard in place to protect what Chief Roddy has done. So if someone else comes in, then they won't be able to undo what he's done. So that's, I mean, I really don't have a lot, much to say about it.
Okay. So council, will they have any questions? I see Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just to, uh, weigh in what Councilwoman Coonrod said, I agree with her 100% in that regard. I think that, uh, our Chattanooga Police Department led by Chief Roddy has been way ahead of this, and that's just kind of a, a testament to the character of, of our leadership and what we're doing here in Chattanooga. And I believe, um, I don't know if Chief Roddy is out there, if you could look for him, Lydia, but I believe that we're also fortifying this as well with a written policy and as an addition to the, the Chattanooga Police Department website. And if he's available, I would like to, um, have him talk a little bit about that, because I think that's another step to fortify what we believe in here in Chattanooga.
I'm not seeing, well, I guess, need to let Vice Chair take this.
I see a hand up.
All right, yeah, I see Jason Urban. I was letting Lydia look. I don't see Chief Roddy, though, sir.
Okay. But, uh, if he's, if he's not available, I will say that, uh, we've had conversations, uh, about the, and, and they are working on adding, uh, the language to fortify eight can't wait, uh, onto the Chattanooga City, uh, Police Department website. So I think that's another critical step, and, um, I think that's an important, uh, let's see.
I've, I've got him.
Yeah, you should have him.
I do.
Okay. I will be quiet and let the, uh, chief talk.
Hey, chief, you're on, sir.
Good afternoon, council. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
I apologize for not being able to zoom in. We had a, an active scene earlier that I was on scene four and didn't make it back to an office in time. Um, but thank council on all your comments. Um, yes, your department, uh, was in front of many of the eight can't wait principles before, uh, the tragedy that sparked a lot of the conversations we're in now. But, uh, to elaborate on what Councilman Ledford alluded to is we have been working with our city hall partners to build connect pages to give the community a better understanding of what the eight can't wait principles are and how they are either already or have recently been captured in strong language within the police department's policy. And those connect pages should be coming up in the next few days, we hope. Um, I was getting an update on that this morning. So those are gonna be direct content website links through the police department's website explaining how eight can't wait looks in our police department.
To answer your question, Councilman?
Yes, sir, thank you, chief.
Great. Thank you, chief, very much. Uh, I've got a few other hands here. Let me roll over to these. Chairman Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, and I don't know if this is, uh, maybe for chief, uh, Councilwoman Coonrod or who, uh, to, to boil this resolution down, uh, in the last, uh, basically in the last paragraph, it says, uh, be it resolved that we acknowledge the accomplishments of the Chattanooga Police Department. And so my question is, basically, this resolution acknowledges the accomplishments, uh, that the Chattanooga Police Department has made in regard to leasing policy. Uh, chief or Councilwoman Coonrod, can you confirm that that's what this resolution does?
Yes, it says that at the bottom of it, absolutely. I feel like that it should be in there, because, like I say, I, I, I'm not aware of no other police department that acted as swiftly as our did. Like, our chief of police was already saying, hey, this behavior is not acceptable. These are the changes that we're gonna make, and I think they should be, you know, something should be said about that, about our police department. Uh, maybe others will begin to follow what we're doing here in Chattanooga. Um, it's what I hope. Um, you know, I, I could brag on them all day long about, you know, the great things that, that they're doing, um, you know, and also, as chief know, that if something that I don't agree with, he's gonna hear my mouth about that. So it's only right that we shine a light on them doing the positive things as well.
Chief, would you confirm as well that that's what this resolution does after reading over it, that it acknowledges the accomplishments of the police department?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Are you good, Chairman?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Good. Councilman Gilbert?
Hello, chief. Uh, did you get my request? How you doing? Did you get my request on the ADM-5 and ADM-16?
Yes, sir, I sent those over, uh, earlier this afternoon to both you and Ms. Lynn.
Okay, I appreciate it, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good, Councilman?
Yes.
All right. Any further questions either directly about this resolution or for the chief? Seeing none, my question would be, uh, is the council ready to move this item onto our agenda, uh, to be voted on? Is there any opposition to moving this to our agenda? I guess it'd be a more appropriate question.
Mr. Chair, and that goes on to the two-week agenda, is that correct?
It'd be two weeks from today, sir.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Byrd, your hand is up, ma'am.
Yeah, uh, no opposition to it. I don't have it in front of me. What has it entitled? Can you read that to me?
The, the title is Eight Can't Wait Principles is the name. Let me read just what the, the intro on the resolution is, Councilman. It says, "A resolution acknowledging the accomplishments of the Chattanooga Police Department and conducting a comparison of its adopted policies with the eight can't wait principles and the recent amendments by the chief of police concerning officer duty to intervene, stop and report other members of the department if they are observed to commit an unlawful or improper act in the course of their duties as police officers." That's the introduction to the resolution, ma'am.
Great, great. I'm, I'm along with, uh, Councilman Henderson. I wanted to make sure that the intro was saying that, and it does. Thank you.
You're very welcome, ma'am. Um, I see no further hands, so if there is no opposition, uh, Mr. Attorney, will you please make sure that this is placed on our agenda two weeks from this evening?
Yes, sir, will.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, with that item covered, Mr. Chair, I have nothing further in legislative committee. Are there any further questions for this committee directly? Seeing none, I believe we are to adjourn into attorney-client privilege. Is that correct, Mr. Chair?
We are, and I'm, uh, assuming that we need to log off and then log back on, is that correct?
That is correct, sir. I will see you all back in a few moments. Thank you.